City of Stevens Point Common Council Meeting, recorded March 20, 2023.
I have seven o'clock. We will call the regular Common Council meeting of the City of Stevens Point to order. Clerk, could I please get a roll call?
Christiansen?
Here.
Shore?
Here.
Keimer?
Here.
Zerazua?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Hassanz?
Here.
Niebon?
Here.
Shuda?
Here.
Dalton?
Here.
Fishler?
Here.
Morrow?
Here.
And everyone who's present, if you would please join me in our salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a pretty heavy agenda today with three presentations, so we will forego the opening remarks by the mayor and afford us a little more time for our presentations. At this time, anyone who wishes to address the mayor or council on a specific agenda item other than a public hearing should register their request. Those who wish to address the common council during a public hearing are not required to identify themselves until the public hearing is declared open by me. We do not have any public hearings, so if there's anyone that wants to sign up to speak on an agenda item that hasn't, Bethany is off to my left. She will take that information. Anyone? Also, as a reminder, anyone who hasn't signed in, please do so before you leave, so we have a record of everyone who showed up. Okay. Oh, we got someone else? There you go. I'll fill it out later. I'm going to object to something. Thank you very much, Bethany. Great. Okay, so now we will move on to item number four. Persons wish to address the mayor for up to three minutes on a non-agenda item. Mr. Bushman? The floor is yours.
I'm Bill. Bill Bushman, Elmwood Avenue in Stevens Point. I think it was about three months ago, Mike, that the council approved the ATV usage along Old 18. I've tried to figure out how to get this to be brought back to the council, so I'm going to use this as my opportunity to do so. I had presented to you the Monday of that particular meeting where it was approved, the fact that the Towne Hall does not allow ATVs on the Old 18 roads that they have jurisdiction control for. So that's why I'm questioning, why would the city approve the usage when it has really no ability for an ATV to go down that road to get the quick trip? I understand they can use it on the city portion, but not the Old 18 Towne Hall portion. Quite frankly, I think it's kind of irrational for the city to do that. So that's what I'm asking. How do we go about getting that to be brought back to the council?
Thank you.
Okay.
And that exhausts item number four, so I will take an opportunity to answer your question. That will be brought back. They put a sunset of a year on it, so it will be brought back probably November of this year. The reason that it was approved and not in the Towne Hall, if the Towne Hall chooses to do it, great. If they choose not to do it, that's okay too. But the city roads at this point are allowed with a sunset clause of, I think it was December meeting, right? I'm pretty sure it was the December meeting, which means it's probably come back in November to see if they wanted to do anything with it. No, but if you want, you can give me a call tomorrow. Thank you. All right. We have some presentations tonight. The first one, Timmy, you're first. I'm sorry. I thought you were second, is from, well, we have Timmy and Danielle from the Boys and Girls Club, and there is a presentation. If you recall, a month ago, Finance Committee looked at the lease that Northwest Journey had been leasing this about a little over 5,000 square feet in this building. We had been holding off on it. We turned down some commercial uses and trying to see where things hashed out. We had an agreement that was brought forward. I'm just going to mute that. We had an agreement that was brought forward, and it was pulled from the council agenda. We are offering an opportunity for the Boys and Girls Club to do a presentation on their need, and then next month, we will have it back, probably at council, since it's already passed Finance. We'll go right to council with it for consideration at that time. But right now, and you can see, I'm just trying to stall because I got to figure out where I'm sharing my screen here. There we go. We will turn it over to Timmy Cooper.
So just a real quick introduction. I'm Timmy Cooper. I'm a board member for Boys and Girls Club. I'm a business owner in Stevens Point and almost a lifelong member of Stevens Point. I did stray into Towne Hall for about six years. But this is a request for the space, as Mayor Wiesa was saying, right behind the police station, for some of our adjunct programs for the most at-risk youth in our community, and we're looking at partnering with the city to help those youths. So Kevin Quevillian put together a little presentation that can speak much more eloquently than myself.
I will share that one.
Stevens Point Common Council members.
I'll start it over.
Good evening, Stevens Point Common Council members. My name is Kevin Quevillian. I'm CEO of the Boys and Girls Club of Portage County. I'm really sorry I can't be there tonight. I'm actually traveling with my family on spring break. However, I have a wonderful staff and board of directors, and some of them are present here tonight to address any questions that may come up. So tonight, we are requesting from the City of Stevens Point to become a partner for five of our high-impact specialized programs by providing space to us adjacent to the Police Department. It's also adjacent to our Barard Center and PJ Jacobs, and of course, the Gerke Park area. These programs really make a huge difference in the lives of children, their families, not to mention the community. Our request is not even for funding support. Rather, it's simply to use some space. There are many benefits that we believe just make a lot of sense, and we'll get into those in our presentation. So we hope the City of Stevens Point will be a partner. We hope you'll consider this request, and we do appreciate your consideration. We also believe that by us operating in that space, we will actually maintain it and even improve it instead of it just sitting vacant like it has been for two years. So again, we hope you'll see the value in our request. We hope the City of Stevens Point will become one of our partners in these life-changing programs. Thank you for your consideration. Have a great night.
And let me hit the other one up.
And just to introduce myself, I'm Danielle Belsky, the Director of Operations. When my boss goes somewhere warm, he sends me to do the dirty work, I guess. So as Kevin mentioned in his video, we're really looking for the City of Stevens Point to partner with us. We have a number of community partners that are already supporting our programs, which you'll see above, is we have our school district, Health and Human Services, State of Wisconsin Balance of State, that's through our homelessness program, which I'll tell you a little bit about, Midstate Technical College, the Police Department, and then truancy court. They are all giving monetary, either monetary facility support or even programming support by dedicating their people to our programs. Go to the next slide, please.
Thank you.
So with the programs that we are looking to relocate is the first one, and they're kind of in order, they are in order of most at-risk to less at-risk. So keep that in mind as I'm going through those. The Gateway Report Center is an alternative to out-of-home placement for high-risk youth. The programming includes mentoring, academic support, life skills, and community service, rather than going and to like Rawhide or another community. They are coming to our program, and these youth are in our Gateway Report Center for six to 12 months. So it is very much, they're coming in a couple days per week, high-impact, working with our staff. The next program we're looking to relocate is Portage County Truancy Abatement Program. This is programming tracking for youth who are habitual truant, so we're working with all of our junior high and high schools for that. Our Youth Enrichment Services, this was a newer program started in 2020. It is alternative to school suspension. So the programming includes academic support. We have a social worker involvement in this, counseling, life skills development, and other service through various partners. The new one that I just mentioned before is our Youth Homeless Navigator Program. This is something that we just started working with, but it's identifying homeless youth and providing mentoring services and resource navigation to assist them. I do want to point out, this is a new program where we can serve 24 years of age and younger with this program. So a little bit out of our traditional demographic, but we do see an asset, especially with neighboring with college. And last but not least, is our Youth Force Work Development Program, which is involving youth in workforce readiness programming, such as junior staff, career camps, job search and placement, and even employer visits, and the list can continue with workforce development. So, thank you. So our programs need new space. Our truancy abatement program and homeless navigation program are currently residing in the old Charles Fernandez School downtown. The Stevens Point Area School District has recently put that up for sale and is asking for us to vacate, so we are needing a new home. The other place is our 1007 Ellis Street location. This has been with us since we opened our doors in 2002, and we really need new windows. We need new furnace, central air, and we, the lack of parking and space for those kids to have programming is very hard for them to do, especially since expanding for our gateway and yes, kids attending that location. So these high-impact intervention programs, just a few stats, is in 2022, our Youth Force Development Program involved about 1,100 youth. That's huge for the amount of kids going through that program. In 2020, our truancy abatement program served 148 youth. 53% have been successful and discharged from truancy court issues. We're developing the Youth Homelessness Navigator Program that we know that one in five youth leaving our foster care system will be homeless. We just started that a couple weeks ago, and we already have youth that are starting to participate, and we've done one service so far. Of 126 youth referred to the YES program since 2020, 94, 94 have successfully avoided a formal youth justice referral or municipal citation for their behaviors. And since Gateway began in 2007, which is the oldest high-impact program that we have, we've served, 162 high-risk youth have been served. Of those 162 youth, only 50 have re-offended, and only 12 were placed into out-of-home care. These are huge statistics. So the benefits of our programming and space adjacent to the Police Department is first-floor access, accessibility for disabled children and adults. I'll be honest, the proximity for BGC training and where our headquarters is, is very nice, very convenient for all of our backend work that no one ever thinks about, from finances and HR and training, and then not to mention our teen center programming is also there. The proximity to PJ Jacobs for students, teachers, principals, and police liaison, those are all personnel that are already currently working with these programs. It would be a huge asset for them. The proximity to Police Department for police responses when needed. I really hope we don't have to call them, but if we need to, it'd be very convenient, but we do want to get them involved with our programming and to have some fun with the youth. The proximity UWSP for staff, interns, and volunteers, they are our heart and soul, to some extent, of our programming and how we're able to deliver these programs. So having those colleges staff be able to learn and participate is going to be huge for them within walking distance. The proximity to Gerke Park for outdoor programming and the city bus line. So having these programs in the space just makes sense. We're really advocating for that. We want you guys to be partners with it through these programs in one year. One year, we are serving over 1,300 high-at-risk youth. So I want you to think about that as we really want to bring in our resources, pull them together, so we can advocate for our youth. And I know in our audience today, we have many of our board, our staff here advocating for this. So.
Thank you.
I know he said we can't ask questions, but feel free to give us a call.
Right, and that's what I was going to say. So if anybody does have questions or wants more information about any of the programs that we talked about tonight, or any of the other great things that the Boys and Girls Club does, Danielle, tell them where they can get a call you.
I'm working nine to five next door at the Boys and Girls Club Barard Center, but I am the Director of Operations and free for any phone calls as well.
You can call and talk to me if you want answers. Call Danielle.
Phone number? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all for showing up as well. As I said, this will be on next month's council agenda. Hopefully Kevin will be back by then, and we can have a discussion.
What's the date of that meeting?
April 18th?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth? Is it 17th? Sorry, I left my phone at home too, so.
Seventeenth.
It is the 17th, Monday, the 17th, seven o'clock. So council meetings are always the third Monday of the month. And thank you again. Next up, from Midstate Independent Living Choices, we have Madison Maitovich.
Mativich.
I knew I was going to screw it up. I got it close the first time, and she's going to tell us a little bit about what Midstate Independent Living Choices does.
Yes, thank you. And I'll keep it short. So my name is Madison. I'm an independent living consultant at Midstate Independent Living Choices, or formerly known as Milk, as our acronym. Milk is a consumer-controlled, nonprofit, non-residential agency serving 11 counties in Wisconsin since 2000, and those counties include Adams, Florence, Forest, Land O'Leary, Lincoln, Marathon, Oneida, Portage, Taylor, Vilas, and Wood. Milk's mission is working for persons with disabilities towards empowerment to make informed choices, and by doing that, we offer five core services. Our first core service is independent living skills training, which is working with individuals with disabilities to develop those living skills that they may need to live independently. So that could be cooking, cleaning, that could be training on how to use the bus. The second service we offer is information referral. So we are kind of a one-stop shop for disability information and referrals. So for instance, if someone was looking for a support group for individuals with Parkinson's, they could reach out to us, and we could share that information for them and do that research. If that's information we don't have or our services don't suit their needs, we can refer them to the appropriate agencies, so they won't have any gaps in their needs. The third service we offer is advocacy, which works on empowering individuals with disabilities, learning to advocate for themselves. As an agency, we also engage in activities to influence positive change in local, state, and federal systems affecting persons with disabilities. Our fourth one being peer support. So staff and trained volunteers with disabilities provide support, guidance, and encouragement for persons with disabilities. We have three mental health drop-in centers, one in Marshfield called ABW, one in Wisconsin Rapids called RCC, and one here in Stevens Point called Rock Point, and that is located on 2040 Jefferson Street in Stevens Point. The fifth core service that we offer is transition services, and transition services are applicable to three different groups. That could be for individuals who are in a nursing home and wishing to move back into their home, and that could be from a nursing home to assisted living facility or whatever they would consider independent. We assist individuals with disabilities in detention centers or who were previously incarcerated back into society, and we assist students with disabilities who are transitioning out of high school to life beyond. In addition to those five core services, we also do a lot more. We have an assistive technology loan and demonstration program. So those unfamiliar with assistive technology, assistive technology could be anything from ramps to wheelchairs to walkers to adaptive silverware or recreational items, which we all have in our loan program. The loans are 45 days long, and individuals can loan these items for free, no fees or costs or anything, determine if it's a good fit for them, or if they're coming from the nursing home back into their own home as a short-term accommodation. We do not sell these items, but we are able to find funding sources or help individuals purchase these items through different vendors. We also offer accessibility assessments. One of the ways that we do accessibility assessment is through family care programs. So individuals in Inclusa, Iris can refer to us, and basically, we come into the home and assess the home to the individuals with disabilities' needs. We also do informal assessments, which anyone can request, that is at no cost, and it provides suggestions for home modifications, which could be anything from a ramp to a barrier-free shower. We also do ADA assessments, so conducting assessments and writing reports on the ADA complying at different levels depending on what the building falls in, and that could be for businesses and new construction or renovations. One of the examples we have is that we were contracted with the Wisconsin Elections Commission to do polling site assessments. So I had the opportunity to go on Election Day and work the full 12 hours like the poll workers and assess the polls to make sure that they are actually accessible to people with disabilities. We also offer housing assistance. Right now, we're in a housing crisis, so we can never guarantee housing, but we can assist individuals to the best of our ability, which means, you know, finding listings, filling out applications together, advocating to the landlord if need or applying for section eight. We also have, offer technical assistance, and that could be for public events or programming, making sure that they are accessible for citizens of Stevens Point, and if they are not fully accessible, then accommodations are in place to make them accessible. An example of this is actually, we worked with the 1,000 Fronts when they came here to do a walk and roll audit, and I was one of the individuals that got to tag along and offer some ADA information, and then also provide the perspective of a person with a disability accessing Stevens Point. So that was a lot of services, but how do you get our services or how do you reach out to us? So you can contact our office at 715-344-4210 and speak to our INR specialist or reach out to our executive, Don Whittington. You're also more welcome to stop in our office at 3262 Church Street, which is located in between Safelot and Dollar General. Just stop in, see what we're all about. We can give you the tour, show you our 700-plus items we have back there. And then if you want to keep up on current events about the events we're doing, because we do do adaptive recreational events, we just had an adaptive ice skating event, and we are looking to do an adaptive kayaking event in July, on July 29th. So if you want to keep an eye out for those, go to our website at Milc/inc.org or check out our Facebook. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Madison. They do a lot of great things over at Milk, and ironically, they need space too. But if anyone has gently-used equipment that you no longer need, and you think someone else might be able to use it, they do take donations, contact Midstate Independent Living Choices and talk about it with them. If you have a temporary need, boy, you break an arm or a leg and you just need something temporary, they can help with that as well. So reach out, please. Our last presentation of the evening, we save the best for last. Our county executive, John Pavalski, will be giving us an update on the master facilities plan for Portage County. John?
Thank you, Mayor Wiesa. Thank you, council. Thank you, citizens. Thanks for putting me on the agenda. Last Finance Committee, Chair Johnson alluded to the importance of communication. Communication is highly important when it comes to, especially in government. You know, Portage County has over 20 departments, over 35 committees. The city is likewise. So that's why, one of my basic reasons being here today is for communication and making sure that's essential, because it's when we're going to be talking about a master facilities plan and the courts and the jail being built, and in order for a successful project to occur, communication is essential. At your last Finance Committee meeting, actually, Fire Chief Moody talked about purchasing an apparatus, and he purchased, actually purchasing an apparatus because availability was limited, and by purchasing it now and taking delivery of it later, he was actually saving the city tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars. That's one of the reasons why I'm here today, because every day that we delay the decision of a court or jail project is costing you and I $26,000. That's $26,000 a day. And we're looking at $165 to $175 million project, and they're looking at about a 6% inflation rate this year, and 6% inflation rate on that kind of money is $26,000 a day, or $800 to $850,000 a month. So timely decisions are very, very important, and that's one of the reasons why I'm here, because again, to communicate that, to make sure everybody understands the importance of these decisions that we're making. Also, at your last Finance Committee meeting, you talked about the potential purchase of land over at the corner of Berluschi and Old 18. Some of the reasons why you're looking at purchasing that was for a potential ambulance or fire department or other reasons, because of expansion, because of accessibility and service to that community. That's some of the exact same reasons why we're potentially looking at a green site for the Portage County facility. So the same reasons why the city and the county have likewise concerns that are taking place. And I understand that, you know, your decision would probably have the courts and the jail in the city, but we're looking at advantages, disadvantages, and I'll get into some of the things that we actually need from the city to make the downtown site look more advantageous. I am assuming you all got my letter. In my letter, I had several items that I was talking about looking at. One of those was that actually the transference or sale of city property that you own to make the downtown site more favorable. Having limited space downtown, your added parcels allow us to move the synagogue, increase needed parking area, and make it a little bit less congested. Another one of the things I brought up in my letter was the willingness of the city to sell or allow the county to annex land should the green site be chosen. I mean, if a green site does get chosen, we will work with the city any way or shape possible to make any problems or make any disadvantages that that would cause, to make that as less problematic for you as possible. And also, three, we looked at your intentions, would like to know that your intentions of with Business 51, because I was talking to public safety officials, that whatever happens with Business 51 would cause some potential availability to services in those areas. Once all those specifics are hopefully determined, to the best of your ability, the county would have a team that would meet with your representatives, probably Mayor Wiesa, Ryan Karnowski, and others, and we'd assess all those advantages, disadvantages, and we'd present that before the county board, and then the county board would eventually make a decision. The public and the city input is totally welcome. Tomorrow night, we're having a county board meeting where the public is welcome. The city is totally welcome to give input. There's also a meeting that will be taking place on April 10th, a committee of the whole, where again, the public is going to be welcome. We'd like to make some decisions about the direction of the jail and the courts by the county board meeting by April 18th. Because of all the costs going up, we feel that we've answered a lot of the questions that the county supervisors had, but we would like some more information and appreciate more information from the city regarding these things, so we can make the best possible decision we possibly can. I'd like to leave you kind of with an analogy. Suppose you had two sons, and I'm not sure about the marital status of the people around here, but if you're not married, suppose you had two brothers, and you loved your sons, loved your brothers, and your two sons or two brothers were actually competing in the Olympics. Say they were competing in the marathon. Who would you want to win? One person is going to have to win. So at the end of the race, what do you do? I suggest you congratulate them both, as long as they competed fairly, hard, and honestly, and then you actually encourage them to work together to make each other better in the future. With that, I'd like to leave you, and thank you for your time.
Thanks, John. John, if anyone has questions in regards to anything on the county side, how can they get ahold of you, or who should they call?
They can, you know, get me at 715-346-1999, or you can get on the county website. I've got the county exec offices there. You can email me and, you know, give me any suggestions, concerns. You can email me and, you know, give me any suggestions, concerns that you might have.
Thank you, John, and thank you Chairman Haga for showing up tonight as well. We appreciate it. This is probably one of the biggest decisions the county will have to make in our generation, likely. That does exhaust our presentations for tonight, so we will move into the agenda. If there is no objection, there was a request to move item number 25 up to number eight on the agenda. Are there any objections to doing so? Okay, so the agenda will be amended to move item number 25 to after number seven and then we'll continue on that way. First up is the consent agenda and that is before you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, moved by Keemer, seconded by Johnson. Discussion. Comments from the audience? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Zerazua?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Passant?
Aye.
Niebone?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number seven is on page 68 of your packet. That's an ordinance amendment. It's a fee for the temporary premise extension. If you recall, we introduced this, talking about the USGA and how businesses throughout the community could get a liquor license extended so they could serve on a patio or maybe some of the parking lot in an attempt to help accommodate some of the tens of thousands of people that are going to be entering our community in late June, early July. It was determined that we already have a system in place, of course, for the extension of premise, but with the influx and the volume that we're expected to get, we thought it would be good to standardize that so staff time is duly compensated. We are proposing a $25 fee for review and processing of those requests. All of the requests will still come to the common council for approval. So I would expect that we would have large volumes of extension of premise to review at our April meeting and very likely our May meeting. June might be a little late, but we may still have a few stragglers there. Staff will do all of the internal reviews in regards to the safety, so when they make their recommendations to you, they should be thoroughly vetted. But right now, what we're looking for is to change the ordinance to apply that fee to cover the staff costs.
Assuming you're looking for a motion?
Yep. Alder Person, Johnson?
I would make a motion to approve the fee for temporary premises extension as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second? We'll give a second to Dalton. Sorry, she had her hand up first.
She's quicker.
And keep in mind that this fee is not just for the USGA. This is a blanket. Anytime anyone has an extension, whether it's a homecoming event or fundraiser, that would be applicable. Any comments from the audience? Hearing and seeing none. Clerk, please call that roll.
Morrow?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Niebone?
Aye.
Passant?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Zerazua?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
And that is approved. Now, item number 25, which is on page 99 of your packet. A request from the city of Stevens Point to acquire five unaddressed parcels located off the Berluschi Road and Old Highway 18 with the parcels identified in your packet, consistent with chapter 62.23 sub 5. And before we get into a motion, we have several people who wish to speak. Dean?
I'd prefer my lovely wife Gretchen.
Okay, you both signed up, so it's just Gretchen?
Yeah.
My name is Gretchen Steinmetz and I live at 1833 Halsted Drive, which is part of the Hunter Oaks subdivision. I've lived in Hunter Oaks for 20 years and in that time, I've met a great deal of my neighbors and some have become dear friends. The reason I'm standing to speak this evening is because I am fearful of what the city will do with the parcels on Old Highway 18. We've been told that there are no plans for these two chunks of land and that they could become any number of things. Often, when I'm trying to discern the truth, I focus not on words, but instead on actions. When I look at the notes from the March 6 City Plan Committee meeting, I don't see a layout for a new subdivision or a multiplex or a park. What I do see is a very detailed design of a new city garage, complete with areas designated for snowplows, garbage trucks and yard waste. I'm fearful for what this will do to our neighborhood. The increase in traffic, noise and smell, just to name a few. Several of my neighbors could not be at this meeting because they are on spring break. But while talking with one of my neighbors yesterday, he posed this question. Will it really matter if we're at the meeting tomorrow? And my knee-jerk reaction was, of course it will matter. The common council will listen to the people. But the longer I thought about the question, does it matter that we are here, the less sure I became. Please vote no to the purchase of these parcels. Your no vote will answer the question, does it matter that we are here? Thank you.
Thank you very much. James Maronk?
Hi, my name is James Maronk. I live at 5648 Hunter Oaks Drive, Hunter Oaks subdivision, obviously. I've lived there for about 15 years now, neighbor of Gretchen's. And I too, am very concerned about the proposal to buy these lots, especially seeing as all the trouble that went, that the city or somebody has gone to make up plans for this new city garage that supposedly, I watched the video of the last meeting where this was discussed and, oh, no, no, we don't have any plans for this property. Doesn't look that way to me. And I'd ask any one of you if the roles were reversed and we said, hey, we're looking at buying this property and you found on there that a block away from where you live, that the city was thinking about putting up a new garage and possibly a new fire station. You probably would be concerned about that. I mean, it is going to be an increase in traffic. There's going to be a lot of noise. There's going to be pollution. It's going to be a mess. And I don't know, the city's got a bus garage not far from where you're talking about doing this, in the industrial park, where I think a city garage should be, in an industrial park, not in possibly residential areas. If you build a city garage and people want to put a house next to it later on, that's their problem. That's their business. I don't care. But putting it next to where people have lived and love their neighborhood, that's kind of lousy, I think. I hope you can vote no on this.
Thank you.
Bill Bushman, Elmwood Avenue. I'm in the Conifer Section off of Old 18. We may not have the same concerns that the people in Hunter Oaks do, but trust me, we have concerns and a lot of it is noise, traffic flow, things of that sort. But I would ask if you're, and I too, I feel that there hasn't been much consideration about an alternative use over and above the fire station and the city garage. Fire station, again, I don't know why that can't be put in front of the Transit Department. It's less than a quarter of a mile. I don't think it makes a huge difference on response time. As for the city garage, as Melissa had pointed out in the finance meeting, there were eight sites considered. This happened to be chosen as number five. Nobody has said anything about why the other sites, other than the airport obstruction issue, but nobody has said anything about why the other sites have not been chosen. So again, lack of transparency, lack of communication. I would also think if you were looking at both usages, and I'm going to say residential, I'm guessing you haven't had an appraisal. If you were to get an appraisal, you're going to have to determine probably what's the best use, residential or commercial, and it's going to have an effect on your appraised value. You're going to pay 2.2 million, I understand, in total for this particular project. I think you would want to know what the value is, and again, based on usage. I don't think there's been any due diligence done. If you are looking at it as residential, it's been used for agricultural purpose. I'd be a little concerned about the soil. I'd be a little concerned maybe about drainage out there. I mean, I've seen that field flooded. I don't know, I don't think there's a high water table. I don't believe either Hunter Oaks or Conifer has a high water table, but again, you haven't, I don't think you've done the due diligence to make a decision for this. So I would ask that, yes, unless you can honestly say that you're looking at this from both perspectives, I could not support the purchase. I've said in the past that I hope that we can buy it and I hope that it is only under the condition that it is residential usage. And if we can't make that decision for that use, I would vote against it. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to have Director Kornowski come up here and explain the thought process behind it, but someone had mentioned the plan for the Streets Garage and for the Fire Department. Those plans have existed for several years. Honestly, we've been looking at getting the Streets Garage out of Buckle Park since before I was even elected as an alderman in 2004. So the plans exist because those plans can go on almost any parcel. We haven't talked about ruling out those other eight sites for the fire station yet because we're not in a position to build a fire station yet. These are options and I'll let Director Kornowski talk about how we got to where we are.
Thank you, Mayor. So city staff has, of course, been looking at a number of locations for either a fire station or a public works facility. You know, I believe about a year ago, Bariantos presented to this body the eight various locations that a public works garage could be located. This was one of them. What ended up happening was the land simply came for sale and city staff kind of jumped at it and said, okay, we have this opportunity. We've identified that parcel for some use, not saying it has to be a public works garage or a fire department, but being in control of the land and the future development of that land is an important piece, especially when these pieces of land are immediately adjacent to the city's municipal boundaries. It's a really critical component here. So we had gone through, worked with the Public Works Department, on the Fire Department, we've done some gap analysis where our coverage for fire response times is. The east side, of course, is one of our major areas and then looking at where Bariantos had identified other locations and just said, well, let's look at how these things could fit together on this specific parcel. Again, we're not necessarily, and really, the discussion tonight shouldn't be what the use is because that's going to come before if the city decides to pursue a fire station or public works garage. There's a whole plethora of additional approvals that have to occur, including public hearings, which are very specific to the use of the land. The acquisition of land, I think, is just strategic in nature for the city in the long haul. There are some questions on whether or not an appraisal has been done. I can tell you that the land immediately south of this property in East Park Commerce Center, the city has acquired it between 30 and 35,000 an acre and that's occurred pretty much since 2012. Our most recent purchase was this year and that was at 35,000 an acre. If you look at the price per acre, this is about 25,000 an acre. So we didn't feel as though the appraisal was necessary, given that the fair market conditions around it, being the city being the one buying property in East Park Commerce Center, you know, being more expensive to acquire in this property for, we didn't see the need for an appraisal. I'm fairly certain we would come back and, you know, we'd be there at fair market value for this acquisition or slightly below it, quite honestly. But that's something that we can always pursue if the council so chooses. But if you look at just the sheer acquisition, being strategic about how the city's going to grow outward, I think just having this in city control is going to be a really critical component for the next decade of growth and development for the community.
And Director, just to be clear, our current comprehensive plan has future land use for that area?
It's identified as residential.
It's identified as residential. And to be further clear, not just the fire station or Streets Garage would have to come before this body, but basically any use.
Correct.
Whether it was a residential subdivision.
Correct.
A aluminum smelting manufacturer or a puppy yoga house. All of those uses would still have to come before this body and several others before any decision would be made.
That's correct. Okay. Maybe not the puppy yoga house, but I'll check the zoning code.
There's one in Applewood, believe it or not. All right. So before we go any further, I would turn to the council for a motion. President Johnson?
I'd like to make a motion to postpone any action on this until a time when we can have further discussion about its use.
Okay.
Let's second that.
Okay, the motion is to postpone for an indefinite period of time until we can have further discussions about its use. We're talking about the motion on the floor now. Comments or questions directed to that? Alder Shore?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess this leads me to want to ask about the possibility of losing the opportunity to purchase.
Buckle Park, Rick Abell?
The city has the option until April 30th and at that point, I believe the purchase agreement would either have to be extended or the sellers could decide to go a different route and another buyer.
Alder Person?
Last week at the finance meeting, we discussed, I asked a question, is if the city did not buy this land, could someone put a factory up there? And it was told to me that no, they would not be able to do that without the city's approval. Well, right now, effectively, we do control that without even buying the land. Correct?
So the city does have what's called extraterritorial zoning authority, so this does fall within that extraterritorial zoning, but really, that land, that specific zoning regulation only relates to subdivision development. So a good example, and we've seen this in the past, where a new subdivision wants to go in in the Town of Hall, they want to do, let's say, one acre lots and the city, or two acre lots, sorry.
It's the minimum.
And the city has denied that for various extraterritorial reasons, namely that if and when the city would provide municipal services to that specific subdivision, it would be cost prohibitive and likely would essentially create its own town island. So there is some authority the city does have. It's currently, this specific property is currently located within the Town of Hall, so that would require annexation. Any property that comes in under our ordinance through annexation is zone R1 single-family residential. So you would have to, for whatever use, whether it's residential, government use, manufacturing use, you'd have to go through rezoning, comprehensive plan amendment, site plan approval and likely conditional use permit. So those are four separate approvals that would have to occur really before anything would occur on this specific property.
For annexation.
As a result of annexation, correct.
But if the Town of Hall developed it into something else, we have the ability to object and the attorney, I think, is in the overflow room. He can come in and correct me if I'm wrong. We have the ability to object, but should that go to appeal? We don't have absolute authority to say no. It would be decided depending on what the use was and what our objections were. If they're reasonable, then the court would see in our favor. If they are unreasonable in the court's eyes, they would see in the defendant's.
It really comes down to, the extraterritorial is really focused on subdivision of land and whether or not that's subdivision for residential or commercial or manufacturing. That's where the city's main control is for the properties that are outside of our jurisdiction.
City Attorney Beveridge, you want to expound on any of that?
So to clarify, if I ever come across a question that relates to extraterritorial zoning, the first resource I look to is Ryan. So I think you can leave it to him to answer those.
Fair enough. Thank you. Lawyers.
Does that answer your question, Alder Person?
Yes, I guess it does.
Any more?
Yeah, I'm looking at the effective cost of this is over 2.1 million after you figure in closing costs and interest that's paid over the timeframe of this. We have land for these other, people have brought up tonight, as far as in front of the bus garage, the land there, the city already owns. We could go about and not do anything with this, save 2.2 million and eventually maybe use that for the concrete for the fire station when that's built, saving the money now to use in the future, not just buying land and holding it, losing a tax base on that.
They don't pay taxes now, though. There's no tax on that land. It's not in the city.
Okay. All right. If that land was to become residential developed, then there would be tax base that would be there. there for whomever is owning that property.
If it get, if it gets annexed to the city, the city would then realize tax revenue. But if it does not get annexed to the city, it would go, it's still the Town of Hall and the county.
All right. It'll go to the Town of Hall or county. If it ends up being something like the city garage, then there's no benefit to us, correct?
Correct. Well, no tax benefit.
So, we lose more money that way?
No tax benefit.
Yes.
Yeah, and I will add on the transit site, the available land is relatively small. I think there's six acres remaining, and there are a number of federal funds tied up within that land, so we would have to untangle that.
It would be a purchase.
It would be a purchase from the transit department, essentially.
Federal funds paid back.
Can you repeat that, Ryan? Just because Joel wasn't on the microphone.
Sure. It would be federal funds that would have to be paid back.
Right.
Because we utilized federal funds to build the transit garage. And so, that, those federal funds also were used for the acquisition of that specific property. So, if the city were to use it for anything other than transit, we'd have to pay back those federal funds. Buyback, essentially, federal funds.
So, at some point, those federal funds are gonna have to be paid back when we develop that property.
Well, the long-term plan for the transit site has been for light rail, passenger rail. So, that was part of the overall development plan for that specific site.
Director Limpke, you want to speak to the transit portion?
When the, when the property was acquired, the west half of it had the idea of a park-and-ride, an interface with local transit and inner-city transit, and in the event it ever happened, an interface with rail, because our only real chance for passenger rail in this area is on the freight rail. So, the land there is federally obligated. It's not really fully city-owned. It's deeded to the city, just like the airport land is, but that's also federally obligated. So, if we were to do something else there, which, you know, there's, there's a path to it, but you should consider it a land purchase, because 80% of the cost of that was covered by federal and state funds.
And I'm gonna reel it back in on the use of transit land, because that's on the other side of the tracks and not germane to the agenda. The use, I think, is important. So, if we talk about the potential use of the land, but primarily, we need to talk about the purchase.
Right. And regarding the financing, do we really want to spend this for this land when we could use this money elsewhere, like for a new fire station, the start of it? That's something we all have to consider.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alder Morrow?
I mean, I don't have an issue right now for, if you don't really have a use, because I know when you plan for the future, you're going to need land to expand. And you don't know what that is, what that is going to really look like. I think for the, because I know there's a huge lack of single-family homes in the city. Where folks cannot buy a plot of land, build their own house. I mean, we've done a lot with condos, apartments, and so on, but not really for single-family homes. And I think one of the concerns that a lot of the folks here have is that there might be a smelting pot or something put out right next, right next to them. There might be some kind of firm or something, something that's gonna really diminish the home values. But I mean, and I understand the city's not in the business of building homes, the city's not in the business of building a Chick-fil-A or Olive Garden, as the mayor always says. But like, if we, but if we do end up having to land, then this will allow us to also grow. Because like Stephen's point is a growing, I mean, it's not growing right, right now, but we need to put the tools in for it to be able to grow. I mean, folks are, when the folks want to buy homes now, they go down to Plover, so that they could buy themselves a plot or a home site and build what, and build whatever they want. And we really don't, we really don't have that here. We have a few spaces in Moses Creek and a few on Falcons Cove where I live. But besides that, there really isn't any, there really isn't anywhere to really buy and build your own home. And I think this is a great option for us, and if we could put city utilities in there as well, that would stop some, someone from buying plots and then putting in two acre lots for septic and so on. I don't, I'm not really concerned about the right now, because I mean, we have to build for the future. And there's, and the future, we don't always see it right now. I've lived in communities before, and I remember when I was a child, the city I lived in, in Kansas, bought all this land up north, and everyone was like, what the hell? And now, it's a thriving, there's like homes out there, business parks, everything. And that's really ended up helping this city out, but you don't see that, you don't see that immediate benefit at that time. And I think when we have the opportunity now, I mean, I think we're gonna have, we're gonna have regrets when someone else buys that land. One thing I would like is an assessment. I mean, that was something, that was, that was something that was brought up. What is the assessed land worth? I know that Ryan said that right, right now, we're looking at 24,000, about 24,000 an acre, which is below the other parts, but it is also nice to see what the value of that is. I know in another purchase that we looked at, that was not done, and that, and we were getting ready to buy a large part of land, and we did not ask for the assessment. And, and that was brought up, and that put a hold on to that. So, it might be nice to have that done, so that we know exactly what we're getting and exactly how much that is worth.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alder Fisher, did I see your hand up?
Oh, I was just wondering if there's a way that, you know, it's being postponed, if we could maybe have that assessment done and then reconvene before the 30th, if that's a possibility.
Well, we'll have a regular meeting before then, so, yes?
Bring it back.
We should be able to do that. If, if we're going to postpone, all we need, staff needs direction as to what information you want before we bring it back, so we can, we can have that prepared and bring it back whenever that information's there. So, assessment will be one of those things. Anything else you have?
I guess, you know...
When you say assessment, do you mean assessment or do you mean appraisal?
Appraisal, I think. Assessment was being thrown around, but I think appraisal is really...
And that brings up a good point, because generally, the appraisals go by comparable sales. And we've just heard what the comparable sales were. But we'll get a refined number from the assessor.
Okay.
And I should, I should clarify, I did misspeak, the contingency, or the, the offer of purchase is valid through the end of this month. We, the Anderson was end of April. Sorry, I was getting those two mixed up. So, we'd have to do an amendment, which I think the sellers would be amenable to. But again, if you want the appraisal done, you're really, you're throwing good money after bad, namely because the other vacant land that's been out there is the properties in East Park Commerce. And if you're looking at what we acquired along Grolowski a few months ago, the price per acre for those parcels is significantly higher than what we'd be paying here. So, if it, if it helps the council, go ahead and postpone, and we'll get the appraisal done. I don't think you're gonna see anything significant change from it, other than, yes, you're paying either market rate or slightly below market rate.
Okay. Alder Dalton?
Yeah, I'm, I'm supportive of taking action on this tonight, and I think we discussed this at, at finance at great length, and part of it is the, the control for future planning. And as Director Kornowski discussed, it's in our comprehensive plan as residential. So, I'm wondering if maybe we need to see a just comparable plan for what a residential layout looks like, as, you know, obviously, what was presented with the garage and the fire station is kind of the fearful of, warning of like, oh, this is our plan. So, I think just having some layout of what it means for the city to acquire this with the intention of residential plotting and developing, because we've talked at length in committees and full council about the need to plot out parcels and the role the city has in developing that, and as well as in the Housing Task Force about the number of people who are moving to our community from outside of the state and paying good money and have much more money coming from other ends of the country to develop homes. And I think this is the type of parcel and neighborhood that might be able to serve those interests, rather than, you know, in the, in hoping to diversify the whole market that our county has. So, I would support taking action on this tonight. But I understand if the plan is, if we're held up.
Thank you. I'm gonna go to Alder Person Nibone, who's had her virtual hand raised.
Thank you. Yeah, I would kind of echo Alder Morrow and Alder Dalton. I think we delay this at our peril. I don't think we're in any big hurry to decide what needs to go out there. I've long been a supporter of a fire station on the east side. I think that's inevitable. But the cost, not only to build a building, but to staff that many firefighter, paramedics, all the equipment, we just don't have the funding to do that now. But someday, I hope out here, there will be a fire station. I think land is becoming more and more scarce. I think any opportunity that the city has to acquire property that would be cost-effective in order to provide infrastructure support, I think we need to take advantage of that when it comes on the market. We have a lot of time to figure out the use. I think it's a prime location for housing. And I think this, if the city owns the property, we could do some really creative housing development out there based on some of the recommendations by the Housing Task Force. I would not like to see that property taken off our tax rolls to have a city building on it. I think we're gonna need as much, our revenue base, we're gonna need as large a revenue base as we can get going into the future. And I think by acquiring this property and looking truly for some kind of residential use to bring that into our tax, into our tax rolls, is really gonna be a boon for the city. And I think we can work very closely with the neighbors out there. There's, this is not us against them. We can do this so it's a win for everybody, if we take our time and do it right. But if we have, and unless we have a control, we can't do that. So, I'm not in favor of postponing, but if we only postpone for a month, you know, I would not like to lose the opportunity. So, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Shore, then Christensen, then Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm, I'm another one who thinks this, sees this as an opportunity and doesn't want to lose it. It's unfortunate that all those scenarios were laid out about the fire station and garage. You know, the question was raised in one of the comments that someone has a plan. It isn't us, and we make the decisions, just to be completely clear. You're not hearing any of us decision-makers say that the, you know, that the plan here, the aim, the interest even, is in relocating the garage to this location. President Johnson made the point at the last meeting that when that was looked at, there were a lot of potential sites, and I think this was the bottom of the list. And so, what you hear about our interest in residential development, which lines up with what we're hearing from the neighbors, what you're hearing about our interest in growing our tax base, which is a lot of what we do, I think are, those are indications from us that when the issue comes up, that's how, how we'll be leaning. It's just that the decision to be made right now is about purchases, about being able to have the control over it and not losing that chance. So, I, the, so the, we, the option expires.
End of this month.
End of this month.
End of this month. So, I would join with all the others in not wanting to, to take chances with that and to approve this tonight.
Thank you. Alder Christensen?
I guess I'm kind of on the same line of thinking as, as a lot of the elders that have spoken just recently. I, again, land is important. We need the opportunity to expand. We need to have places for people to build, and it doesn't exist. We don't have access to property adjoining our property, become available very often. When I saw this come available, I was, I was hoping we would, we would be jumping on it right away, and, and we did. And I should have, and I kind of thought we, more than likely, it's just, it's the logical thing to do. The location, we know when Stephen's Point expands, there's only certain directions that it can go. The fact that we're able to get it at a price considerably less than what we've been paying in that same area, to me, is, is a bonus. As of right now, everything out there is zoned residential. For it to be anything different than that would require a lot of, and I just, I don't see the, I personally am not in, in favor of, I'm not 100%, and in full dis, I'm not 100% against the fire station. We do need a fire station out on that east end of town. I don't see that as being the, that the highest and best use for that property would be a public works garage. And I do think we need to move it out of Buchholz. I think we need to keep looking for other options for that. I think our decision tonight will be whether or not to make that, whether to postpone or whether or not to make that purchase. And land is one of the things they're not making more of. And when we have the ability and to make a purchase, and when you think of how many thousands drive into this community to work every day, because there, there aren't places to live. And I've attended the Housing Task Force meetings, and we do need housing. In order to have housing, you need land. So, I'd be against postponing and, and supportive of a purchase.
Thank you. President Johnson?
Thank you so much. It's the first time we've had a conversation about the use of the land in public. This is about process, not about the fact that we need additional residential properties, because that's clear. And I would disagree that there aren't plenty of opportunities within the urban core, because there are. If, the process should have gone like this. If this truly was about the public works garage, then in 2021, when Beriantos gave us the study on where the public works garage should go, well, let's call it a campus, for lack of a better term, council should have taken action way back then, and we didn't. It just sort of sat. And now, all of a sudden, it's coming forward, and it's going, oh, yeah, remember? Remember, we had this idea that this could be one of the locations, and now the property's up for sale? And gosh, this could be, it's one of the options that Beriantos, and Beriantos, for those who are unfamiliar, is a consulting firm out of Milwaukee that did a bunch of work for the city identifying possible locations for a public works campus, call it that. This was the fifth option out of eight, which means it's way down below all the other options. In that process, we missed the opportunity for this body, as Alder Shore says, we're the decision-makers, or we like to think we are. We should have had some affirmative sort of process on that. We did not. And now, all of a sudden, it comes up, and it is zoned residential. I take my zoning very seriously. I take my comprehensive planning very seriously as a planner myself, and it's all residential. So, now we have this, right? The messaging is not mixing. And so, this is really, my motion is about the fact of failure to communicate well, to make decisions on the public works garage before we even thought about placing it here or having that discussion. The fact that we're having this discussion about it should be residential, it's the first time we've had that discussion. It's the first time we've had the discussion, and it makes me very happy, because what I'm hearing is a commitment to the people in that area that this will remain as it is zoned and as the future land use planning, our comprehensive plan indicates. So, this is about process and a failure to get that process right, a failure of communication and a failure of messaging. That's the substance of my motion. Not that we don't need land and we don't need homes. Lord knows, I've been looking for a smaller place for a long time and can't find one. So, that's the substance of it. Failure of process, failure of communication, failure of messaging, so.
Thank you very much. Just a point of clarification, it is not zoned residential at this point, it's zoned agricultural. It's in the Town of Hall. It's in our future land use class.
Our future land use plan.
Yeah, the future land use has it set for residential?
Residential.
Because we've talked about it before, and that's what the plan currently shows. Because we've talked about it before, and that's what the plan currently shows. So I just need to get those two points of clarification out. The motion is still on the floor? Anyone?
It is on the floor.
Additional comments in regards to that? Oh, sorry. Alder Fishler.
I agree with Alder Johnson. I think that, you know, the issue isn't, you know, the land purchase itself. It's the information that was in a different committee meeting that was discussed outside of, you know, I guess, it should have been discussed, like, if that's what we're planning and doing, then, you know, there shouldn't have been a, well, maybe, you know what I mean? There should have been, like, concrete things, like, well, this is really what we're looking at it for just residential. And that would have put the minds at ease for the people who live there. But because that didn't happen, now we have people coming forth saying we don't want a fire station there, but that hasn't even been discussed in any committees. So I think that's the important thing to understand here, and maybe just as a learning curve for the future, is that unless you specifically are really implying that this is supposed to be used for a certain use, or that it's going to be a fire station, don't bring it up in any committee meetings. Because otherwise, people are going to get the wrong idea, and this is the product of what happens because of that.
Right. So, and thank you for that, because it's, you're right. We don't have a plan. There are options. There's lots of options. To give you an example, the same thing happened on the Highway 10 property east of Parkdale Park. Property came on the market. It was contiguous to the city. We still don't have an use for it. But it was an opportunity to secure our interests as a city, and we purchased that property. We've had a couple of ideas about what to do with that property, and we've, we've talked to several groups about developing that property into something.
We do collect rent on that.
We do collect rent on the house, yes. We do collect rent on the house. And I think we get $50 an acre for the hay on the big open field. But we've had that for several years with no design on what to do with it. This is one of those things that was similar. The opportunity came up. It was contiguous to the city of Stevens Point. It wasn't our future land use plan. Yes, it could be a streets garage. Yes, it could be a fire station. It could be both of those things. It could be an ATV, UTV rental facility. But we haven't talked about that yet. What we're doing is determining whether or not we want to secure this property so we are able to have that discussion.
Right.
And, and maybe it's a couple of years, just like the Highway 10 property. But we have the ability to control it at this point. If it's, if it gets out of our control, much like the house at Buchholz Park, we don't get to do much. We're bound by whatever the Town of Hall, in this case, allows, short of our extraterritorial review, which may or may not hold up.
Just one last comment.
Yes.
Is that I think in the future, if there's a land purchase that's going to take place, you know, maybe it's important to just really focus on that land purchase and then moving forward in the proper steps to make sure that we're doing things properly and not inserting ideas to the public that, oh, it might be for this or it might be for that. I mean, I know people want to know in advance what it's going to be used for, but that's where all of those public hearings take place, and everyone is involved at that point and then can be heard, and it's a proper way of doing things. And that's really what was lacking in this instance, in my opinion.
Okay. Alder Passas.
I'd like to expand. Alder Person Dalton mentioned the fact of not having a residential outline like we have for the fire station and the garage. Last week, at the Finance Committee meeting, we had three different real estate purchases, and this was the only one that showed just non-residential. The other two showed where the lots are going to be laying out, and we need to be consistent with all of these. In hearing some of the other Alder people talk tonight about this and mention the fact of residential, if this does pass tonight, I just hope you all hold to your, what you're saying as far as this is a residential area. And I know that there's a lot of people out here that are going to be holding you to it too.
Okay, Alder Shuda.
You might have mentioned earlier that this was not a hard date, the end of March?
I believe there's.
Some room for another month.
Probably some room for an amendment to the purchase agreement. That's probably something that we can work out with the broker. But, you know, at the same time, they could say, no, we don't accept that amendment, and we're in a situation where we have to back out of the purchase agreement because they don't accept the proposed amendment to extend it, just say April 30th.
And again, I'll go back to, if we're going to postpone, we need to know what information we expect to have when we bring it back. It would be premature to have a vote on an use when we don't own the property. And that has to go through the Plan Commission and then the normal process of everything else as well for all those approvals when you determine an use. We can certainly talk about what might happen, and we've been doing that for three weeks now. So just, if we're going to postpone, we need to know what information you're hoping to get when we bring it back. Yes?
Thank you. I agree. Evaluation of the property is probably really important. I also agree, some sort of conceptual idea of what this could look like as a residential development and what those, the valuation of the lots could be. Just giving us more than imagine the land, and we want to control it. So again, I am very happy to hear that there is almost unanimous support for some sort of residential development here. I'm not saying that we'd have to, but will it fit 100 lots? Will I see your curious eyebrow, 100 lots? Will it fit 20 lots? Will it fit 80 lots? Again, just, we already saw the concept for a public works garage, right? Let's give the due diligence just a little bit of a nod on what a residential opportunity would look like there.
Director Knosky, I don't know if Director Badun's in the overflow room or not, but is that something we could do in-house, a general layout?
Yeah, so included in your agenda packet, we have done some master planning within this whole area, and more specifically north of Old 18. You can see that that was all done in-house, the number of lots, the extension of roadways and utilities as well. The area south of Old 18 has been previously identified. There was a multifamily developer a few years ago that was looking at multifamily development there. You know, of course, the challenges of that lot in residential is the adjacency to the CN Main Line. I mean, that is something that we've got to take into consideration. We look at the value per lot. But yes, that is something we can do in-house, what the subdivision could look like, how many lots you could get within that subdivision, similar to what we've done with like the Anderson subdivision or even the Convent property. That is something we could look at.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anything else? Alder Zarazua.
Sorry. I, wow, this is, I'm glad we're having this conversation. I'm glad that so many people have come out to express their concerns about it. I definitely am one that has been in favor of finding ways to expand residential options in our community. I do just want to say, in regards to the city garage, the benefit of living by the garage is sometimes you get plowed earlier than other people. So please don't minimize that benefit of living close to it. Many, many years that I was first, just the plow went right past my house and I was good to go. But I do think, like, we had that presentation about the city garage, and we all had sticker shock. So I think that's why we all moved on. Like, it was so expensive that we're like, this is not anywhere in the near future. Like, I think your children will be grown before this would be something that you have to worry about being in your backyard if that were even the direction we went in. So I guess I really put a lot of faith in Director Knosky and what his department does and trusting that this is a good idea for us to move forward with. I, I believe in that and want to show that by supporting that.
Okay, I think, hang on. Alder Keemer, I think you're the only person that hasn't spoken yet.
Sure. I guess just to reiterate what other people have said, I agree with Alder Dalton. I don't think we should postpone. I think this is a great opportunity. Again, we need a fire station on the east side. Does it need to be at this spot? I'm not sold on that. We need a public works garage. It's expensive. It doesn't have to go here. But I don't want to lose this opportunity to have this parcel or the shot at this parcel, so I'm in favor of moving forward with this.
Thank you.
I had a, I just wanted to clarify. I thought you said that we had an option on this until the end of this, this month, not next month.
This month.
Because I know you said before it was April.
Director Knosky had originally said April, corrected himself. There is the possibility of getting an extension on that option to purchase, as Director Knosky said. Nothing is guaranteed, though.
And I want to also, what Alder Zarazua said, when they had like 43 million for the public works garage, we moved on pretty fast right after that.
Yes, we did. All right. Motion before you is to postpone action. If you are in favor of postponing, you will vote yes. If you are opposed, you will vote no, and the clerk will call a roll.
Morrow.
No.
Fishler.
Aye.
Dalton.
No.
Shuda.
Yes.
Niebone.
No.
Plissance.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Zarazua.
No.
Keemer.
No.
Shore.
No.
Christensen.
No.
I have seven, four. Seven, four, the motion fails. Floor is open for another motion.
I'll move approval of the property purchase.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the purchase. We'll give the second to Shore. Discussion on that. I know we've talked it to death, but we want to make sure. Okay, if you are in favor of the purchase, you will vote yes. If you are opposed, you will vote no, and the clerk will call that roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
No.
Plissance.
No.
Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
No.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
No.
Morrow.
Aye.
Seven, four. Seven, four, the motion passes. Thank you all very much, and regardless of what happens with this property, there will be many more meetings to determine the use before anything happens, including annexation. So again, thank you. Back to our agenda, and I'm going to go by the original numbers now. So item number eight is to award the, I'm sorry, let me take just a second here. I know, and I thank you all for showing up, all the board members and representatives for the Boys and Girls Club. Feel free. We will not be offended. Thank you for showing up. Sure, we'll have a five-minute recess. Back in order, in session. And we are moving on to item number eight, which is to award the 2023 by Two Minutes Patching Project 23-03 to American Asphalt of Wisconsin for an amount not to exceed
Still moved.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion.
That's what that meant.
It's just always so much fun to ask. How many bids did we get?
They were included in your packet. Generally with asphalt, you're going to get one.
One, that's.
Yeah, so.
I think it's important for the public.
But we do open it up to everybody. So if anybody wants to open up an asphalt manufacturing facility, first of all, we've got some land where you can do that. No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
I just think it's really important for the public to understand. Bid for asphalt, we get one.
Almost exclusively, we'll get one American asphalt. They're kind of the only show in town, but it is open to anyone. Vote, roll call, please.
Christensen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Plissance.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number nine, to award, is it okay if we just take nine through 24?
No.
You're very different.
Wait patiently, no.
I'm trying to throw them off guard so they don't shoot their hands up again, right? To award the 2023 curb gutter and sidewalk repair project 23-05 to BMD Concrete Innovations for an amount not to exceed $82,688.11. Moved by Keemer. Seconded by Fishler. Discussion. Comments from the audience? Hearing none. Clerk, please call a roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Plissance.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 10 is to award the 2023 Police Department Roofing Project 23-09 to Maurer Roofing, Inc. for an amount not to exceed $37,835. Moved by Shore, seconded by Zarazua. I like it, right? Usually it's everybody waiting to make the motion. So moved by Shore, seconded by Zarazua. Discussion. We could talk about it, but it's over my head. I used it last time, too. All right, if you're in favor, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no, and the clerk will call that roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Plissance.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number 11 is an update on rate adjustments to Water, Wastewater, and Stormwater Utilities, Director. You're not looking for action tonight, right? This is just a kind of a?
No, this is action.
It is?
Yeah.
For the council?
Yes. It was approved at the commission. What happened here is that the numbers you see, the four and a half percent numbers, were approved in January, and that's the track we're on between when that was approved and the action being finalized. The commission, the Public Service Commission, changed their simplified rate case from four and a half percent to eight percent. This is the one you go in for without a full rate case, so that's where we're at now. So I had to bring it back to the commission for approval. They did approve it last Monday, so it's here for consideration.
And it's the State Public Service Commission that's doing the adjustment.
Yep, this will lead to, once they, once they review it, it'll lead to a public hearing and everything else yet. So this is basically my permission to apply for that. However, the sewer and storm rates are locally regulated, so this would be approval for those rates, and we do them all at the same time, assuming May or June 1st right now.
Okay, motion? So moved by Christensen, seconded by Dalton. Discussion.
I just, it's 11% this year, and then it's 11% next year, too.
On the storm side.
Right.
Yet to see what we need on the water and sewer side for, for next year. Storm needs to be 11 two years in a row because of this year's borrowing. They basically said in order to keep up, you need to have about a 22% increase. Now, storm is the smallest rate base, so it's a third of the sewer and water one, so bigger percentage leads to less dollars, really. But it's to keep up with the capital. We've been doing the last few years, we've been doing big storm projects because our pipe projects, our reconstruct projects have been big. And when you're in an area of downtown, that can lead to some of our biggest infrastructure being involved, so those have been expensive years. So this is really to keep on course with roughly 1% that we're shooting for, and we've been doing a good job of that, looking at our numbers for decade by decade. We've got a big decade to overcome here. You know, about 20% of our infrastructure is from the 61 to 70 era, so if we don't keep up on the 1% a year, we're going to fall really behind in those, as we approach that, but we're doing good, right?
Thank you, that explains a lot.
Any other questions for the director?
Yeah, just one question.
being involved, so those have been expensive years. So this is really to keep on course with roughly 1% that we're shooting for, and we've been doing a good job of that, looking at our numbers for decade by decade. We've got a big decade to overcome here, you know, about 20% of our infrastructure is from the 61 to 70 era, so if we don't keep up on the 1% a year, we're going to fall really behind in those, as we approach that, but we're doing good right.
Thank you, that explains a lot.
Any other questions for the director?
Yeah, just one question. Thank you for the estimated cost increase in the memo in your packet. I just wanted to clarify if that was the amount estimated to increase annually or quarterly?
Quarterly, it'd be just under $5 a month.
Okay.
Okay, anything else for the director? We have a motion and a second. If you're in favor, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no, and the clerk will call the roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebon.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number 13 on page 75 of your packet is an ordinance amendment to 4.05 sub 2 filing of list of claims to include a process for approving claims related to the enterprise funds, utilities, transportation, and the airport.
Motion to approve.
Move by Dalton, seconded by Keimer, discussion? Comments from the audience? Seeing and hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebon.
Aye.
Plissant.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zerazua.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 14 is a resolution, a request from Susan Schuler for a conditional use permit to renovate an existing detached garage into an accessory dwelling unit, an unaddressed parcel off of Fourth Avenue with parcel identified in your packet, consistent with chapter 23.01 sub 14. Move by Zerazua, seconded by Johnson, discussion? Yes, sir.
This is the first one of these, correct?
Yes.
It is, okay. And it seems like a very good one to consider looking at, and hopefully this works. It seems like a very good program and helping out with parents and stuff, it's a great idea and I'm for it.
Great.
Alder Morrow. I'm like generally against these, but I think this, I think this is, this is what it, I mean, this is what it should be for really, not for college students or whatever, but this is, this is the plan, and I, and I think it's great that she's wanting to do this for, for like her parents and so on.
Thank you.
I generally not crazy about these things either, but she's, you know, we passed it and they're following all the rules, so.
Great. Alder Shore.
I was strongly in favor of this, but also was very serious about the owner occupied requirement, pushed for a pretty stringent definition of occupied, and I want to state for the record that I never had nor have any intention of changing that owner occupation requirement.
Okay, any other comments? Comments from the audience? Hearing none, clerk, please call that roll.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Zerazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Plissant.
Aye.
Niebon.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 15 is a resolution, a request from Dave Organies, representing Growth Hotels LLC for a conditional use permit to construct a hotel in an unaddressed parcel off of John Jonas Drive with the parcel identified in your packet, consistent with chapter 23.02 sub 2 sub C sub 3 sub A. Aye. Seconded by Shuda. Seconded by Dalton, discussion? Yes, sir.
In looking at the map, it looks like everything's pretty tight in there. They did a pretty good job of figuring where, where they cannot be putting the land, a property. And listening to Tyler when he was at the Planning Commission meeting, mentioning the fact that he tried to look for a larger building, but then decided on duplexes, I think that is a good move. I think it fits the area a little bit better than a high-rise of some sort.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, if you're in favor, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no, and clerk will call the roll.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Zerazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Plissant.
Aye.
Niebon.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 17 is another resolution. This is a request from Bruce Ouiji, representing St. Paul's Lutheran Church, for a conditional use permit to construct in addition to the parochial school located at 1919 Wyatt Avenue and 1901 Wyatt Avenue with the parcels identified in your packet, consistent with the chapter 23.02 sub 1 sub E sub 3 sub A and chapter 23.02 sub 1 sub D sub 4. President Johnson moves.
I'll second.
Seconded by Keimer, discussion there?
Just one comment.
Yes.
In looking at this, I had a number of, this is District 5, it's just around the corner from my house actually. Couple people asked why a home that wishes to build into the setback is, that would be a zoning variance. And for some reason, our zoning code gives special dispensation to nonprofit churches, schools, hospitals, to build in those setbacks. So I think in the future, there may be an opportunity to have some, especially as we update the zoning code, discussions about some consistency between those kinds of units and then residential units, so.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebon.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebon.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 19 is an ordinance amendment, a request from the City of Stevens Point to amend chapter 25, the sign ordinance of the revised municipal code, amending section 25.03 and 25.06.
We skipped 18.
That is 18.
Oh, oh, sorry. My bad, my bad.
It's okay, you had me second guessing myself too. It's all right.
I got presentation burnout, I think. Said request amends the sections 25.02, I'm sorry, 25.03 and 25.06 for the purpose of defining athletic field signage and outlining permitting requirements for such signs. Move by Keimer, seconded by Shore, discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Zerazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Plissant.
Aye.
Niebon.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 19 is another ordinance amendment, another request from the City of Stevens Point to amend chapter 23, the zoning ordinance for the revised municipal code. Said request amend section 23.04 sub 2 for the purpose of athletic signs not being considered off-premise signs. Move by Shore, seconded by Fishler, discussion?
Mayor, I, I just have a comment.
Yes.
Way back in the old days, when I was a student here, I played softball out at Zenoff Park, and I got to say it's some of the best softball fields I've ever played on in several different states, so kudos to the park department.
Nice, thank you. Anything else? Hearing none, if you're in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no, and the clerk will call the roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebon.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 20 is an ordinance amendment, a request from the City of Stevens Point, again to amend chapter 23 of the municipal code, this time section 23.01 sub 12, for the purpose of establishing a uniform addressing system for buildings located within the City of Stevens Point. For those hearing it for the first time, this is not meaning you're going to get your parcel readressed, it's just changing the duties and moving them all into one location.
Motion to approve.
Move by Dalton, seconded by Fishler, discussion?
Hearing and seeing none, clerk, please call that roll.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Zerazua.
Aye.